Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Council meeting for Tuesday, April the 16th. Please silence all electronic devices, stand for the Pledge of Legions, and a moment of silent prayer. Ms. Ireland, take the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Prezvelinski.
Present.
Ms. Silvas.
Present.
Mr. Simmons and Mr. Stemley.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
And for the record, Mr. Simmons is excused. He notified me that he wouldn't be here this evening. Approval of minutes from our regular meeting of April 2nd, 2019. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Carnes.
Support.
Seconded by Councilman Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Reports of standing committees. Councilman Dabney?
Alright. The April 16th Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:03 PM today by Chairman Dabney to review the claims filed since our last meeting. Committee members Beatry and Prezvelinski were present as well, as well as Council members Carnes, Stemley, Fitzpatrick. City Controller Rich Murphy was also able to attend. Claims reviewed totaled $83,769.55 from the Riverboat Fund, $300 from the Boyd Development Fund, and $1,151,559.61 to be paid to the Energy Savings Group for a savings project, for a claim total docket of $1,235,629.16. Councilman Beatry moved to recommend approval of the docket with a second amendment from Councilman Prezvelinski, and the motion was approved unanimously. Upon a motion by Councilman Prezvelinski and a second by Councilman Beatry, the meeting was adjourned at 6:08 PM. In the summary of the claims goes as follows. From the Riverboat Fund, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, $2,029.9, Global Engineering and Land Surveying, $32,173.75, James Meyer and Associates, $1,502.50, Keister Police Supply, Inc., $5,783 even, Reath Riley Construction Company, Inc., $31,011.21, The News Dispatch, $6,000 even, WatchGuard, $5,170 even, BDM Groups LLC, $100, for a total coming out of the Riverboat Fund of $83,769.55. From the Boyd Development Fund, Corporate Payment Systems of $300, and that was the total from Boyd Development. And then also, as I said, from the energy that we paid to the Energy Savings Group, that was $1,151,559.61, for a total claim docket, once again, And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Councilmen. I don't believe there's any other reports of standing committees this evening. Reports of special or select committees. I don't believe there's any reports. And this evening, we will have a report from Shannon Easton, Assistant Park Superintendent, and Jane Daly to present the Michigan City Public Arts Committee 2018 Annual Report.
Good evening, Council. I'm Shannon Easton. I am the Treasurer of the Michigan City Public Art Committee. Jane Daly was not able to make it tonight, so Janet Black, the Executive Director of the Lubeznick Center for the Arts, and also an Art Committee member, we are here to present our 2018 Annual Report.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting us present tonight. Shannon's gonna be the tech person. First, I would just like to thank the Council for allowing us a portion of the budget every year. Since 2011, I think that we've done a lot, and you'll hear about it tonight, so. The mission of the Public Art Committee is to enrich our community through public art, and we would like to help create an identity for Michigan City. I think some people call it "placemaking", that speaks to Michigan City's uniqueness, its history, its natural resources, and its cultural landscape. There are 11 of us on the committee, and Carol Anne Brown is also here tonight. She's been also on the committee since its inception. Every year, we get about $23,000 a year, and this is an outline of basically how we spent the money this year. We always have a line item of art scholarships, which means that any child who lives in the Michigan City area, who wants or within the city limits, who applies, gets $200 per student per year. We've never said no to any child that has ever asked for a scholarship. It's not just for classes at Lubeznick Center, but anywhere they offer other kinds of art programs, like The Nest. And this year, we gave away $900 in scholarships to nine students. We also have a grant program. Part of that grant program is in our non-reverting fund? Or the, yeah, the non-reverting fund? And so, this year, we allocated $2,500 to the Main Street Association to do the Taste of Michigan City event, and they used that money to pay for the Michigan City Soulsteppers performance and to fund an activity tent during the two-day event. They also sponsored the Lubeznick Center for the Arts Art and Artisan Festival, which is a two-day annual festival specifically to pay for free entry for veterans and their families, and for active-duty military for the admission to the festival. This year, we are leasing nine sculptures in our Sculpt Fusion Program. Sculpt Fusion is a program that is, we rotate the sculptures each year and lease them from the artists, which saves us a lot of money and enables us to see what the community thinks about the sculptures, and sometimes we've renewed leases, and every now and then, we've actually purchased sculptures. So, right now, we have nine that are on the lease program. New sculptures that were added this year was Faust by John Sauvay, which is at the skate park. Kunem by Sophie M., which is this red ram that is the talk of the town in many places that I go, which is down at the beach. Many people love it, many people don't, but I think that it starts a dialogue, which we want public art to do. Circle of Fifts is on Franklin Street, and Bird by Steve Kenner is over in Elston Grove. We've also received donations before from sculptors, and this one was actually donated by the Feiger family in Chicago. They have a sculpture by Tom Scarf, which, he is a local regional artist of actually quite a grand reputation. And we actually have this in our permanent collection, although, yes, I guess we have decided where we're gonna put it eventually, in front of the Barker Mansion, but it's not up yet. It's in storage right now. Let's see. In August, John Sauvay donated the sculpture that's outside of Michigan, the City Hall, called "Desine", and at no cost, he waived the rest. We had leased that sculpture for several years, and I think he waived $9,000 and donated it to the city. The city also purchased Owl and the Pussycat that's in Westcott Park. That's by Michigan City artist Richard Kevdi. And so, in addition to the Sculpt Fusion Program, we also have an additional 11 permanent sculptures that have been purchased since the inception, since 2011. So, actually, we have 21, because we also have the "You Are Beautiful" sculpture, the "You Are Beautiful", we call now the "You Are Beautiful Lot", which is actually a wonderful sculpture that we see people taking pictures in front of and stopping and having events around. Autocast is another, it's an app that we actually pay for, but what you can do with this Autocast app, and we've publicized it quite a bit, is that all the sculptures that are in our program in the city, you can, it's a free app, you can download, and you can access all of the sculptures with, that, you'll hear the artist talk about the sculpture, and it's linked to Google Maps, so if you're driving, you can also find your way to the other sculptures that are in the city. And we actually think, it's an app that's used by, I mean, I think hundreds and hundreds of cities now, so people also can find Michigan City has a public art program, like if you're in Chicago and you use the app. And then, all the photographs that you see in your chambers here are also a project that we did. They were from the archives that a couple of the members sorted through thousands of pictures and selected to be reproduced for the chambers here. There's also a kiosk in Westcott Park that has, it was donated by Horizon Bank in 2011 when the Michigan City Public Art Committee started. And along with the sculpture Owl and the Pussycat, it contains boards that are, that recite the poem by, I'm sorry, I don't know who it is. Edward Lear, thank you. So, it's a children's poem, I guess, originally, and those are in the kiosk to go with the sculpture. And the rest is the financial information that I think all of you have in front of you. But I think for $23,000 a year, the city gets a lot for its money.
So, just for transparency, I'd like to report that the Public Art Committee has two funds. One of those is a city operating fund, and we get $22,770 per year. That's what helps budget all the things that Janet outlined tonight. We also have a Gifts and Donations Fund, and that fund is a non-reverting fund, so if we don't spend it, we retain the balance in that. So, that is outlined in the annual report that was given to you tonight. Some of those donations come from fundraising. The mayor has generously donated funding to that to help support some of our grant projects. So, I just wanted to make it clear that we do operate under two funds. One operational, one non-reverting.
So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does the Council have any questions or comments to Janet or Shannon?
Okay.
I just want to thank the both of you very much for all the hard work and effort, and the whole, I should say, the whole Art Committee. Yeah, can't leave anybody out, because I'm on the Art Committee now, so. And now, and now I know how much hard work and effort, you know, that goes into, goes into this committee, so I appreciate it very much, and now, I'm starting to open my eyes up, you know, to more art around the city, and like you said, the red, the red ram down in the park. Yeah, my wife and I have had some discussions about that, and I like it, I like it, so.
It's amazing how many people actually do talk about public art. People were talking about it, and they didn't know that I had anything to do with it, and I was just so amused, but I think that is the purpose, is to get people talking and activate and energize our community. So, I hope that it's been my pleasure to serve on it, and I do thank the Council for allotting us the budget that you do.
Well, you do a fantastic job, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have a comment for the two young ladies, the seniors, seniors, juniors. What high school are you from?
South Central.
South Central? Okay, there was a group here two weeks ago from South Central, and if you need any notes or minutes from the meeting, there you go. Ms. Ireland would be more than happy to accommodate, so just sit back and relax and enjoy the meeting. And if you have any questions of anything that's taken place here this evening, feel free to come up after the meeting and talk to any one of the council members about any one of the subjects that come up. We'd be more than happy to talk to you about it, okay? Welcome. Alright, moving along. No other reports from other city officers or departments this evening? The claims docket from Fund 2042, Riverboat Claims of $83,769.55, Fund 2031, Boyd Development, $300, and the ESG Savings Project. We will be making payments out of the Boyd Development for that for payments, application, the parts one and two. Yes?
That money will not be paid out of Boyd.
You're right. It'll come out of the Escrow account.
Right. The financing, these purchase financing.
Yep. Thank you, Attorney Myers. Is there a motion to pay the claims?
So moved.
Support. A motion made by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Claims will be paid. Ms. Ireland, do we have any petitions before this evening?
A petition was received in the Clerk's Office on April 11th, 2019. A petition of McDonald's Real Estate Company to vacate portions of public alley in the city of Michigan City located adjacent to 2404 East Michigan Boulevard.
And I know that there are questions from the Council, so Attorney McDonald, if you would. Oh, well, this is a petition here. I guess we could do it during the ordinance phase of it, that'd make it easier. Yeah, we'll do it all at one time. Okay, thank you. Councilmembers? Communications before this evening? Ms. Ireland?
Correspondence was received in the Clerk's Office on April 1st, 2019, and April 8th, 2019, from DLZ Weekly Activity Reports, ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the Clerk's Office on April 9th from Craig Bell's Planning Director regarding the 2018 Annual Report for Planning, Zoning, Redevelopment, Inspection Department at CDVG. Correspondence was received in the Clerk's Office on April 8th from Save the Dunes Inviting the Council to the Beach Access and Shoreline Management Workshop. Correspondence was also received on April 1st from the Indiana Fraternal Order of Police, Michigan City Dunes Lodge Number 75, Proposed Changes to the Current Mayor Rank Structure.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ireland. If you would, Ms. Ireland, our first ordinance on first reading this evening by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating Article 3 in Chapter 58 entitled Smoke-Free City-Owned Parks and Playgrounds. And this is introduced by Ms. Carnes.
And would the sponsor like to comment on the ordinance?
Yes. There are already four areas, I believe, in the Michigan City Parks Department where smoking is prohibited. Patriot Park, Gardena, the Zoo, and North Point Pavilion. This would extend that ban to all park facilities and grounds. Of course, the main goal of this is to protect the public health and guarantee the rights of non-smokers to pre-smoke free air, but I think the one thing that people don't understand is the amount of litter that is generated from cigarette butts and the like at the beach and in the park, and it would also help eliminate those issues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance this evening? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, are there any council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, reading over the ordinance here, all great goals that we're trying to attain. When I was on the actual Park Department Board of Directors, this came up, and we started getting into discussions. When you're down at Washington Park, if someone starts to smoke down there, I mean, who's gonna enforce it at all times? The police obviously can't be there. And then we have our 18-year-old, 19-year-old kids working down at the park. Are they gonna walk up to someone and tell them they can't smoke? So, this one, it could have some weird unintended consequences coming out of it. I like it, but, and then, but I know there's, there could be some issues with this. It's kind of like, you know, you say no dogs at the park, but you drive down there early in the morning, you see somebody running through the park with a dog running behind them, and hopefully, you're doing what you're supposed to do and picking up behind the dogs, but when you get into things like this, you gotta ask yourself, do we have the resources to enforce it? And that's, you know, one of the concerns I have, if somebody's standing there smoking, we have our young people working down there. Are we expecting them to jump in and tell somebody that they can't smoke? I just don't like the situation someone could be put in for that. And also, did this pass through the Park Department Board of Directors itself? Or is this just something that came up without being vetted through the Park Department Board of Directors?
Are there any other comments by councilmembers? Any other comments by councilmembers? I have a, pardon?
No answers to that question, but was it vetted?
Hold on, hold on. If Councilwoman Carnes wants to answer it, she can answer it. She doesn't have to answer that question if she doesn't want to. She asked a question, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, but if the Councilwoman wants to, go ahead, Councilwoman Carnes.
The Park Department scheduled meeting was not held. It was, the Park Board was supposed to meet first and third Wednesdays, I believe, and the last meeting was not canceled. I did speak with the Park Board President and one of the members, and I spoke with Jeremy, and asked for their support at their next meeting. And I understand that we'll probably have a workshop on this anyway, so I decided to move forward with it.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, I have one question. Under a city-owned park, underneath that paragraph, where it says "land underwater", what does that mean? Land underwater?
It would be the lake.
Pardon?
The lake.
Yeah, on the ordinance, it's spelled L-A-N-D, underwater. So, is that, is that supposed to mean something? Is that a typo or something?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a meaning of what that means, land underwater. But we can discuss that, we can discuss that in the workshop, too. I don't want to put you on a, you know, spot right now, if we don't know what it means.
I have, but it's something that means the lake.
Doesn't mean if, like, if you have a boat, you bring your boat in, you anchor it off, and you start smoking and throw your cigarette butts in the lake, that's prohibited? That's the way I'm reading it. I'd agree with that, too.
Okay, if that's what the understanding of it is? Okay. So, it could either be land underwater or a lake?
Well, we also have ponds in Henson Park, for example. So, it's broader than just the lake.
Okay. Alright, with that being said, yes, this will be going to a workshop, and I am going to send it to the Public Health and Safety Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Hamilton, and Councilman Simmons is on that, and Councilman Stemley.
Can we have a joint workshop with the park?
And we could have a joint workshop with the Park Department, too, yeah, that'll be fine. Alright, so that'll be with the Parks and Recreation, which is Councilman Dabney. Okay, what?
Committee?
We're going to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I thought you said the...
And the Health and Public Health and Safety.
Wouldn't it be better just to have a council workshop? If you're already having six council members roughly there, you might as well just call a council workshop and have everybody there. I mean, if you had six of the nine, you're already in the majority of the council anyways.
Yeah, that's true. Well, I'll tell you what, that's what we'll do. We will have a council workshop. Is that okay, Councilwoman Carnes? Alright, we'll have a council workshop. Yeah, I mean, we'll have to make sure all these, the Park Department heads can get there, and like that, yeah, everybody can be there, so. I guess I will call Jeremy, see when he is available, and I will call the date of the meeting, and away we go. We're gonna have it. Alright, so when the date comes, make yourselves available. Alright, moving on to our next. To our next ordinance on first reading. Let me get back to the agenda. Ms. Ireland, our second ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating Section 22-85 and Chapter 22 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to waive permit fees on city-owned projects. And this is introduced by Mr. Stemley.
And does the originator have anything that he would like to add?
Yes, I would have. As explained in the ordinance, they, the contractors or the city department, would still have to apply for a permit, but the fee would be waived. There will be no overall cost or effect to the city budget, and this would just eliminate the shifting of one city department's funds to another and potentially lead in savings in city capital improvement projects in the future also.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments? Any council comments? Any council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over to our next meeting for a second reading. Ms. Ireland, our next ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating Section 46-231, Chapter 46 of the Michigan City Municipal Code to provide free yard and lawn care services for elderly and disabled residents. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Stemley, Mr. Dabney, and Mr. Prezvelinski.
And do any one of the authors have anything that they'd like to add at this time?
Yes.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Well, first off, I don't, I didn't name it the free yard care services. It was the senior lawn care relief is what I think should appropriately be called. And essentially, it's, it's not a handout, it's a hand up. Some people in our community aren't able to rightfully take care of major yard care issues, like at the beginning of the season, after our heavy winters when we have tree limbs down or other debris that was washed up by the snow. So, if someone's elderly, disabled, and I know that has to be clearly defined, and I figured we end up in a workshop or committee and work through this anyway, so that's why I asked all you guys to kind of work this with me. But at the beginning of the season and at the end of the season, I think that we should provide certain residents, if they meet the qualifications, certain assistance with getting the yards and stuff under control. It's a basic overall neighborhood beautification, and just to help out with people that can't readily take care of these issues themselves, nor afford to with their own assistance. So, I know that we're gonna need to discuss what the age is. So, uh, I know that we're gonna need to discuss what the age is, uh, the income levels of individual, physical ability, uh, funding, personnel, equipment, and many of the details before, uh, this can be a reality for Michigan City residents that will be eligible for the service. But, uh, as I walk through the neighborhoods, it's like you'll see nice yard, nice yard, not so nice yard. And, uh, this is all over the city, not just in Fort Worth. And sometimes there's a person that just can't take care of it themselves. So I'm not proposing that we're doing, um, some detailed yard manicuring. But, you know, of, of running a rake across the yard, maybe, uh, running a mower or, uh, yard, uh, what do you call it? Weed whacker across just to clean it up a little bit, so it's even manageable if the person was able to, you know, get one of the neighborhood kids to maintain it going forward throughout the season. So, uh, I think about my father. My father is almost, uh, eighty years old, and he won't let me touch his yard or anyone else. And, you know, he, he wants to do it himself, and this is an eighty-year-old. But, uh, if he wasn't there, my mother wouldn't be able to do it. And if I wasn't available, who would be able to help her? And I also think about my, my grandfather-in-law, he's almost ninety, and he's the same way. He gets on his rider and he wants to deal with it himself. He wouldn't let anyone touch it. But in his absence, who would be able to do that? If there's another elderly person or someone else that's incapable of doing it? I think the people that pay taxes in this city, uh, and have paid taxes for many years, I think, I think we owe it to them.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Stimley?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, table this indefinitely. I feel, uh, we need some time to figure out all the logistic finances and resources for a project of this magnitude.
Okay, there's been a, uh, motion to table indefinitely and seconded by Councilman Hamilton. Ms. Nyelob on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Ms. Carnes?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Silvers?
Aye.
Mr. Stimley?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelob. Ms. Nyelob, our next, uh, ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance vacating portions of public alley with, within the city of Michigan City located adjacent to twenty-four oh four East Michigan Boulevard. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons and Ms. Carnes.
And would the author like anything to add at this time?
Uh, yes. Uh, so the purpose of this would be to, um, um, vacate a portion of the alley that right now runs into the parking lot at McDonald's and rededicate, uh, a new alley that would connect to part of the existing alley so that they could have access onto Ashland Avenue. And, um, Mr. McDonald is here, and he's gonna give us a brief overview.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. McDonald, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Barry McDonald. I'm an attorney here in Michigan City with offices at six oh one Franklin Street. And, uh, I am here tonight representing McDonald's Real Estate Company, which is actually the landowner of the McDonald's on Michigan Boulevard, whose address is twenty-four oh four East Michigan Boulevard, and which the Lebesnik family operates, um, and has for many, many years. Um, presumably, if this gets pushed forward to public hearing at the first meeting in May, I will also make available, uh, a representative of the Lebesnik family, a representative at McDonald's corporate, so that they can answer kind of any details that the public may have at the public hearing as well as the council. Um, but essentially, we are requesting a vacation of portions of this north-south alley, some of which have been vacated many years ago, um, that essentially bisected the McDonald's parking lot on the Boulevard. In exchange, my clients would be willing to grant easements to, as we indicated in the petition, the sanitary district. As a result, I will tell you of, uh, the Clerk's Office filtering this through all the department heads, Mr. Russell at the Water Department has reached out to me and has indicated that, I think somewhat unbeknownst to everybody, there is also a water line that runs in that same alley. And so, depending on what Mr. Meyer might recommend, I and my clients are certainly willing to amend the proposed ordinance to also include the granting of an easement, not just for the sanitary district, but for the Michigan City Water Department, to allow, obviously, for the continued placement of the sewer line and water line that run north and south, uh, in that alley, or the portions of the alley that we'd be vacating. What this would allow my clients to do is complete the significant improvement that they've been doing, all of the, all of us who live here and have gone there, can notice how nice it's, it's, uh, been improved. They wanna continue now kind of the hardscape and landscaping. And obviously, when they do that, they wanna know that they have the ability to control property that, in all practical purposes, they've essentially been maintaining, uh, for the city for many, many decades. In other words, it's essentially been treated as a part of their parking lot for many years. So in addition to allowing them to complete their improvements, the other, perhaps even more important aspect is it's gonna be a better safety situation. Meaning, right now, both for the patrons of the McDonald's as well as the public, it's a rather precarious situation in that the public alley spills out into a private parking lot. And so it's both dangerous for those folks who are using the alley, who then have to look out for patrons and kids running into the McDonald's, but also for the patrons themselves, who have to watch out for people who might be just using the alley. And again, there's no other outlet for the alley other than the parking lot, uh, for the current McDonald's. So, kind of as part of their global, uh, you know, reworking of that site, uh, they started a dialogue, I think, long before my involvement, with folks like Mr. Meyer, Mr. Phillips, um, and have brought us to this point where we are now before the council. And so we certainly would, uh, I'd be happy to do my best at answering any questions you might have. Certainly, again, at the public hearing, I'd have the experts here on both McDonald's corporate level as well as the Lebesnik family. And I do wanna thank both the Clerk's Office, who have already sent out notice, I believe, for the public hearing, uh, and Mr. Meyer, who's been a huge assistance kind of crafting this ordinance moving forward.
Are there any questions?
Yeah.
Comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I know this area well, not my ward, but it's my neighborhood.
Um... My, my old paper route, too.
Your paper route?
Yeah.
All right, so now, so I'm seeing this, it, it would close the alleyway off. Is that what I'm hearing?
It would, and I think I meant, left off a significant portion, which is in addition to the easement, the area that's outlined in blue?
Okay.
Would, is area or property owned currently by my client? That they will then be going before the Board of Works to dedicate to the city of Michigan City and actually build out for the city of Michigan City a new alley.
Okay.
So that there'll be a new, safer outlet, so that the alley essentially doesn't dead-end, and we have a situation where a garbage truck would have to back up all the way north, for example. So thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Dabney.
And that was my biggest concern about the whole thing, is that there would be an alley one way in, and you have to reverse or do a U-turn and, and go out the other way.
Correct, absolutely not. I think, I think the Planning Department made that very clear early on in this discussion, that that would have to be provided for.
Cause I was gonna ask about, like, the garbage trucks and how a garbage truck navigate that area. Okay, I feel a lot better with you telling me this. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Mr. McDonald, I have a, uh, a question. Where on the map, it shows this red portion right here?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe that there's houses that their backyard butts up against?
There is one house, there is one homeowner who owns on North Carroll Avenue, Mr. Preszbalinski.
Okay.
And, again, long before my involvement, the Lebesnik family kind of reached out to that owner because if this vacation request is granted, that owner will end up with half of the alley. In other words, we will only end up with, meaning my clients, half of the vacated alley. By statute, the alley basically gets split in two and goes to the two adjoining property owners. So in an ideal world, we, we would have struck a situation where we may have been able to get the full alley. But as it sits right now, we've not successfully concluded that discussion. And so if the council were inclined to grant this petition and the ordinance, only half of that red portion would go to my client. The other half, by statute, would go, in fact, to that adjoining property owner on Carroll Avenue.
Okay, will they still be able, that one homeowner, will they still be able to get, uh, the refuse trucks down to them to get their garbage?
I would think...
That's what I'm looking at.
The house sits on both lots. In other words, there's two, two lots immediately north of the end of the parking lot on Carroll Avenue.
Yeah.
I believe that the garage is actually on the northern half of that lot, if I recall from looking at the property on aerial photos. So, I think that, again, the portion north of that red portion will still be there. So if you kind of take that, you know, the white portion of the alley, and you then make, kind of pretend to make the turn to the blue, I think that there's not gonna be any problem for a garbage truck to be able to come...
Oh, correct, correct. I just wanna make sure that they have access to give to the garbage cans, the sanitary district.
Correct.
Will they have to walk down three hundred feet, or, you know, not three hundred feet, I know that?
I, I don't...
Will they have to walk down to get to the garbage cans to bring them out to the truck?
I don't...
Will the truck be able to go right by the cans where they can put them on the back of the truck?
I think, and I'm sorry for the public that they can't see it, we'll do a better job at the public hearing. But i- if, if you see that kind of the garbage truck would come down and make a turn?
Right.
That's right at the corner of the existing house. In fact, I think this survey outlines the corner of, I think, maybe the garage. So if they're like me, and they put their garbage cans kind of near their garage, the garbage cans would go basically straight out, kind of where the red portion and then the northern portion kind of meet. And so I would think that that would be, you know, basically right there for the garbage truck.
Right.
Certainly, if there's any tinkering that has to be done, though, we would take the lead from Mr. Meyer's folks at the sanitary district. But I think that in discussions with both the sanitary district, the refuse department, and the planning department, they spent a lot of time in kind of shaping the new proposed dedicated alley to make sure that it did function for that homeowner and all the rest of the homeowners.
Okay, and, and I know we have a while to go before we vote on this, but I just wanna make sure that the residents are not gonna be negatively affected.
And the only, and again, I think the only, the only specific resident that gets affected at all, and in fact, they pick up essentially free land if the council approves, is the one owner immediately north, who's, it's basically the first house on Carroll Avenue beyond the parking lot. And nobody else would be affected because we're not asking that any of the portions of the rest of the alley be vacated or touched. So the alley would still exist.
Any other, uh, questions, Mr. McDonald? Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks, I hope.
Couple of weeks, three weeks. Thirty-three weeks, yeah. Hi, is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone else from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any other council comments? Any other council comments? Any other council comments? This will be held over till our next council meeting. And Ms. Nyelob? Our next ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending the municipal code to provide for payment of members of the Commission for Women for attending commission meetings. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
And would the author like to comment on the ordinance?
Uh, yes. So the past few months, I've been the liaison for the Commission of Women. Um, I've just been in awe of the amount of, uh, information and the, the wealth of education and resources that these women provide to other women in the community. They meet in a group and then they take what they get from each other and take it back out into the community to benefit other women and other organizations. Uh, they do a lot of their own fundraising, and it's just, uh, I think in two thousand and nineteen, I think for us to not have this as a paid commission, that it speaks to, you know, a lot of things. I can't go into them all, I guess, but, uh, I think that this is something that we should go forward with, that, um, it's just my thing, I think, I think they deserve it.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments? Any council comments? Any council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over to our next meeting. Ms. Nyelob, our next ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the budget of the Boyd Development Fund to provide funding for engineering costs to repair the catwalk on Pier, on the pier at Washington Park. And this is introduced by Mr. Stimley, Ms. Carnes, and Mr. Preszbalinski.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Stimley?
Yes, um, the catwalk, the pierhead, lighthouse, and the pier are listed on the National Registration of Historic Places. I remember, I remember back in nineteen eighty-five, the catwalk was selected to be demolished that summer. Uh, many people, people came involved, and the Save the Catwalk Committee was formed. Eddie Reinhardt and Pat Harris of Old Lighthouse Museum spearheaded the committee and, and worked countless hours in saving this now one hundred and fifteen-year-old city symbol, which was used for twenty-nine years by lighthouse keepers to access the light tower. We are very fortunate to have an irreplaceable historic icon such as the pier, the catwalk, the old lighthouse museum, which was the lighthouse, and the lighthouse pierhead on our lakefront. We must protect and preserve them now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a comment, and the reason I support this, uh, and author this ordinance is, uh, it is, the lighthouse is our, the iconic symbol of Michigan City, and the catwalk is part of the overall view and, and structural part of the pier and the lighthouse and needs to be restored, it needs to be restored and kept in place. And as things happen structurally, they should be repaired immediately instead of just letting them go on and on and on, uh, rust out. And then a year from now, we have bigger problems and have to spend twice as much money on it. So that's why I, uh, I sponsored this. Uh, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Any other council comments? Councilman Dabney?
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Uh, please add Councilman Dabney as a co-sponsor, Ms. Nyelob. Is there any other council comments? Any other council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be held over to our next meeting. Uh, Ms. Nyelob, our one and only ordinance on second reading this evening, and we will have a formal public hearing on this ordinance this, uh, evening, uh, by title only, without objection, Ms. Nyelob.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the budget of the Riverboat Fund to provide funding for roof repairs to the city's emergency management building. And this is introduced by Ms. Carnes and Mr. Preszbalinski.
And does Councilwoman Carnes have anything she'd like to add at this time?
I just wanted to reiterate the, um, amount of, um, work that the emergency management team does for the city of Michigan City, and this is a small, uh, investment compared to, uh, the money that they save the city.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And also, what I'd like to add is that the Emergency Management, or Emergency Management Agency is a vital part of Michigan City's, uh, events that we have here. And that organization saved the city over eighty thousand dollars last year in overtime. So whatever we can do to help them, to help them with their building, to help them with their equipment, they deserve everything that the city council, uh, can give them. And I know Mr. Jackson's here tonight, he's the director of the, uh, organization. Uh, the organization does a great job, and we are here to help in any way we can. With, with that being said, is there anyone here from the, uh, we will now have the formal public hearing, and that public hearing will now open? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public which should speak on this ordinance? Formal public hearing is now closed. Are there any further council comments? Any further council comments? Any further council comments? All right, this ordinance will be held over for a third reading at our next council meeting. Moving on to unfinished business. Uh, tonight, we will be voting on the Promise Scholarship, uh, Commission. We have one appointee. And just to let everyone know that Pastor Carol did call me prior to the evening and he is pulling out his, uh, nomination from last council meeting, so Pastor Carol will not be in the, uh, running for this, so. Uh, Miss Nyelov, uh, I think it was Mister Louz and who else was, uh, nominated?
Andrea Sels. And Kathy Walker.
Can you give those names again, please?
Kathy Walker, Ryan Le- is it Labiche?
Yeah.
Labiche?
Yeah.
And, um, Andrea Sels.
Andrea. All right, uh. Mister Myers, just to make sure we're clear here on the vote. We have three, uh, nominations. And can we just vote? Uh, the top two then would then have, have the runoff? Is that the way we wanna do it?
I'm not sure you wanna do it, but what I would recommend you doing is doing that, going through and everybody voice the name that they wanna vote for. If no one gets the five votes required for majority. And have the runoff, so to speak, with the top two.
Yep, okay.
You can only appoint one.
Yep, yep. All right, just wanna make it clear. Okay, uh, everyone knows who we have for, uh, the nominations. And Miss Nyelov, on the vote?
Miss Carnes.
Ryan Labiche.
Mister Dabney.
Kathy Walker.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Ryan Labiche.
Mister Hamilton.
Labiche.
Mister Preszbalinski.
Ryan Labiche.
Miss Silvas.
Andrea Sels.
And Mister Stemley.
Ryan Labiche.
All right, we have one for Kathy.
And Mister Beattie.
I missed Mister Beattie.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm going Labiche anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay. So we have one for, uh, Kathy, six for Ryan, and one for Andrea.
All right. So Ryan Labiche will be the common council appointee to the Promise Scholarship, uh, Commission. All right, very good. Uh. Next, we have nominations. The common council has two appointments to the Sustainability Commission, one appointment for one year initially, and one appointment for two years. Nominations are now open to the Sustainability Commission. Councilwoman Carnes?
I nominate Andrea Janz Davis for a two-year appointment.
Support. Are there any other nominations? Councilwoman Carnes?
I nominate Nancy Molenauer for a one-year appointment.
Support.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nominations are now closed for the Sustainability Commission. We have Nancy Molenauer for the one-year uh, appointment. And who was for the two-year appointment?
Andrea Janz Davis.
Yeah, Andrea Janz, thank you. Okay, and also this evening, we have a vote. Mayor Mayor is requesting the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment. On Miss Kathy Davis. As a member of the Michigan City Public Arts Committee replacing Mister Chiron Williams. So, uh, like, we will vote on this by all those in favor of voting for Miss David or, yeah, Miss Kathy Dennis on, onto the, uh, Public Arts Committee, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed. Miss Kathy Dennis is on the Public Arts Committee. Under New Business. FYI, the common council has three appointments to the Youth Leadership Commission. Two appointments for one year initially, and one appointment for two years. And at our next council meeting, we will be taking nominations for the Youth Leadership Commission. And if I could ask, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick, and the age, I know there's a, uh, an age, yeah.
The age was, uh.
Tell the council members that.
Yeah, the age was, uh, sixteen to twenty-two.
Okay.
And, um, Attorney Myers, the sixteen and seventeen year olds will have to have a permission slip from the parents or guardian. Correct.
Correct.
And then, uh, one of the one of the appointments has to be from Marquette High School.
Well. By the way, weren't we going to ask the schools to nominate those kids that were coming from there?
They were to be part of, uh, the student government, so we'd have to reach out to them to send us that, but yeah, that someone from Marquette High School, student government. At least one of them.
Okay, how are we gonna notify the high schools that we have appointments coming up? Nominations in two weeks. Somebody has to notify the high schools to let them know that we need nominations from the Michigan City High School.
I'll, I'll reach out to them.
You gotta reach out to them? Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilman. All right, that's all we have under New Business. Are there any comments? From the public this evening? Anyone from the comment which you, anyone from the public which should comment on anything?
Good evening, Joan Chamle, eight thirty-two Pine Street. The, I was reading what the mission and the purpose of the city council was to act as the conduit between the citizens and the administration of the city. Some of our city departments are run so beautifully. The Clerks Department, the Inspection Department, and others are lacking in accountability, such as the, in, the direct, the Planning and Zoning Department. There is many times that I've intervened when a client, another citizen, has gone and gone for the juggler of the receptionist because the director will not return their phone calls. And I told them they were, they were venting their frustration on the wrong person. This accountability comes from the mayor's office, and unless there's an ordinance, which I'm not aware of, that the city council has as an oversight body for accountability, because there are times you can't reach the director of planning and zoning. And for the receptionist to be attacked verbally by a frustrated client who's been trying for four weeks to reach him and he doesn't return phone calls. We don't pay the clerical people well enough to take that. Um, other departments, when I call the Inspection Department, they've got new kids on the block and they're all answering phone calls, you get through to people. The same with the Clerks Department. Uh, when their new assistant deputy came on board, if she didn't know an answer when I had a question, I got an answer by being put on hold for a quick moment as she checked the facts. Is there, is there, uh, an ordinance where the city council has oversight so that we can get answers? That I need to see the mayor because I've been the beneficiary of this community development block grant. I was approved for the grant November thirteenth, but did not get heat in my house until March fifteenth. Part of it was because of the Trump HUD shutdown. But I was told by Sherry, who's a very hardworking professional woman, that instead of, I thought she was doing the job of two people, she said, no, John, I'm doing the job of five people. This one woman has I would say ninety percent of all HUD money under her purview at this point in time. She was in a car accident. Thank goodness it was only a fender bender, because had she been heard and out of commission, we would have stepped in. No one is cross-trained to take her place. When you go to the, the planning and zoning and ask when certain people will be in, the receptionist says, I don't know. And again, this is accountability, so I'm wondering if in fact there is an ordinance that would cover that. The director comes in between ten and noon every day, and granted, he has evening meetings that he fields. But this is a daily habit from what people who view the parking lot say, and that's not accountability. I went to see the mayor because my concern, a good manager doesn't allow one, only one person to know the rules and regs of working with HUD, which has rigorous deadlines that must be met or we, Michigan City, loses the money. You don't put all your eggs in one basket. I went to see the mayor. Three weeks in a row. Each time asking for a twenty-minute appointment with him. The third week I was told, not by phone, I had to physically go into his office. I was told, no, the mayor is too busy with the election, he can't see you. But I did tell him what the problem was. Ninety percent of the time when I had problems getting ahold of people, he isn't the person who's done all the work. And again, it's accountability. So I'm asking if there is not an ordinance, because I don't know all the ordinances by any means. If this might be something that you would address, because we need to have our people accountable. They're paid for working forty hours a week, and they should. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Miss Chamle. Anyone else from the public which should address the council this evening? Yeah, you can go to that microphone. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I am Shelley Kerman. I live at four twenty Outlook Cove in LaPorte.
And Julie McGinnis, uh, three eight three Sand Creek Drive in Chesterton.
We have, uh, recently purchased a, uh, franchise, uh, pedal club. It is a bike built for fifteen people. We did, um, leave a city brochure and our business card for all of you board members and are just wanting, um, to see that be considered for the city here, and we think it would be a great, um, attraction for the residents and any potential tourists in the area. Um, and if we need to get on a, a, uh, agenda for a future meeting or how you would uh, propose that we do that, we, um, would like to have that be considered.
Basically, a tour that people could book, um, groups up, up to fifteen people. And we would take them around the sites and places to visit around the city. Um, so of course, we would need permission to be on the roads, you know, in Michigan City. So it's just something that we would like to, you know, investigate and discuss with, with anyone that would be interested in talking to us about it.
Okay, and what I can do is I can speak to you after the meeting.
Okay.
And give you some insight on who to go talk to and.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right.
All right, we appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else from the public which should speak to the council? Anyone else from the public which should speak to the council? Council comments, Councilman Dabney?
No, I was gonna address the, the questions there, because I went through the presentation as I was out in the audience, uh, before the meeting, so I already have the, the presentation. And I have someone that, uh, I think you should speak with, and I, I'm sure that, uh, President here is on the same page as I am, so when the meeting's over, I'm sure we'll direct you to the same person. I can almost guarantee that.
You are welcome. Any council comments, Councilman Stemley?
I'd like to give an update of the last redevelopment meeting. Um, I'd like to commend Mister Shees and Mister Kowalski, along with the rest of the Redevelopment Commission on being proactive on two issues. The first being the extension of the facade grant orders from the north end to the midtown area for business improvements. The second was the Hassan Associates report for a more pedestrian friendly South Franklin from four hundred to Saint John's Road. As reported at the redevelopment meeting, the commission, along with Hassan Associates, will continue to have conversations with NDOT for sidewalks and a, and a more pedestrian friendly South Franklin, which is desperately needed. Along with looking at the opening of Myers Road and the other road next to the movie theater. Which would, would you do, which would reduce traffic on the South Franklin and open up more potential business growth and opportunities. Uh, these projects are in the works and getting looked at, and will have a possible date in sight of two thousand and twenty-one. A few months ago, I asked the council members to write down a few projects that they would like to see looked at at a council's perspective from the Redevelopment Commission. The projects I have mentioned were on the list, and I'm very pleased to see one already started with the city and the Redevelopment Commission um, for the midtown area. The other, also the awareness of the needs and improvements of a pedestrian friendly, friendly south end for the citizens of Michigan City. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Any other council comments? I have, uh, a couple. Okay, Councilman Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
I wanted to speak briefly on, um, something that is mostly concerning the fourth ward, but it's the entire city. Uh, Cagmet Pala Company. Um, I've recently met with the owner of Cagmet, uh, Pala Company in addition to the Fire Marshals, and I'm working to mediate a resolution between the city and the business, so, um, we could get a resolve that won't have the city in a bad position or the business in a bad position. I think that Cagmet Pala Company could be a great asset to the city. It, it could provide up to fifty jobs and, uh, I think it's something that definitely, um, needs looking into and, and it, if I can be the facilitator of a resolution, that's what I'm working toward, uh. I did submit a Freedom of Information request that I'm waiting for the documentation before I can have all the information to draw conclusions, so uh, hopefully I'll have something to report on by the next meeting, but, uh, my request, uh, was just acknowledged today, I guess, because of some, uh, information with, uh, email was crossed up or I didn't get CC'd in or something. But, uh, luckily I had been in contact with the news dispatch in regards to this matter, and upon their request of, uh, information, mine was also answered, so hopefully we can, uh, work through this together and, uh, get a resolution. And, uh, one more thing I'd like to address because, uh, I'm kind of a upfront and personal type. I'm all about transparency. Um, there was, uh, rumors going around about voter registration and absentee applications where my name came up. And, uh, I just wanted to set the record straight because, uh, it being an election, I'm not about to allow anyone try to defame me or question my integrity for a political gain. Uh, there was a hearing yesterday of the county election board where this issue was, uh, addressed and it, uh, it's on demand on Alco TV, so anyone wanting to view it and make the judgment for themselves as what the resolution is can do so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Just a couple, uh, comments that I have is I'm glad to see that the Redevelopment Commission has, uh, taken the facade program to the midtown area. And I believe that the selection cycle, that that's been brought up a number of times, and I think the Redevelopment Commission is taking a heart that the people of midtown, the middle of Michigan City, need some, uh, action taken south of Eleventh Street, so I'm, I'm very glad to see that that's, uh, taking place. And, uh, the, the Plaza, the downtown, the downtown, uh, Plaza. Uh, just a, uh, a concern I have is that back when Roger Brooks was here in August and he put on a presentation, at that time I asked when the city was going to get the, uh, the cost and the operating expenses that it was gonna take to operate this plaza. And he said that in November. and he said that in November, that he would have all that figured out. And I haven't heard anything from the, uh, you know, the administration, uh, Craig Phillips or, or anything, or Roger Brooks. He has not brought anything back, uh, to the city as far as expenses, what that, what that project is going to cost Michigan City, what it's going to cost to operate that project year in and year out. Uh, it's, it's been a great project, people seem to embrace it, but nobody knows what the cost of it is, and that's what the common council is waiting for, to see how it's going to be financed, how much it's going to cost us, before we say, go ahead and go with it. And that's one of my concerns. That way, the, the city council can figure out how we're going to spend our monies going forward in 2019, and how the budget is going to be set for 2020, because we're only, uh, four months away from budget hearings, September. So we have four months, so we need to know what's going on, but I haven't heard a word from it, and I know that any of the other council members haven't either. And with the Promise Scholarship, because I know some of the council members were not in the pre-meeting, but the, uh, Promise Scholarship Committee is going to be meeting this Monday. The committee's going to be meeting, and then after they meet, then they're going to get together with the city council, and we're going to see what we can do to make the Promise Scholarship better, and to include more children in Michigan City, and to make it possibly more, uh, open to even folks that own apartments in, uh, Michigan City. We're going to see where that, where that would fall into, uh, fall into place. And I also, uh, received an email this morning in regards to what, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick, uh, was talking about this hearing in, in LaPorte, which I knew nothing about, and, uh, hear a lot of things, but I don't believe a lot of things until I actually hear them from the people that are involved with, with things. But whoever the person was that sent me the email, I would be glad to respond back to you, but when you don't put your name on it, and you expect me to take action on things against another council member, that's not how you do business. That's not how you do business with Don Preszbalinski. If you want me to respond back to something as a city council member or as a city council president, then put your name to it, put your phone number to it, or put your email to it, and I will respond to it. Don't hide behind an email and expect me to respond to something that affects another individual, whether he's a councilman or whether he's just an average person, that's not the way you treat people, and that's not the way I treat people, no matter who they are. Uh, with that being said, is there any other comments by council members?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Support.
All right, there's a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Needing adjourned.